Call the meeting to order. Mr. Umbyhan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the record show that all board members are present. Public notice has been given. We are working off the revised meeting agenda dated April 18th, 2023. With that, we will move on to our oath of office, where our board clerk, Melissa Wertz, will give our three board members their oath. Mrs. Dickman, Mrs. Troxel, and Mr. Bailing. Would you please join Mrs. Wertz at the end of the table here for your official oath of office to the board?
Okay, so you guys can raise your right hand and just repeat after me. I state your names.
I, Scott Bailing.
I, Sheila Troxel.
Who have been elected to the Office of School Board.
Who have been elected to the Office of School Board.
Member of the Richland School District.
Member of the Richland School District.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, officially, welcome to the board. With that, we'll move on to our board reorganization, where the first thing we will do is the election of officers. We have five officer positions that the board will be voting on. It's one of the few times that the board will be able to vote in a secret seat, a secret ballot. President will be conducted first. At that point, I will turn the meeting over to the elected president, and then Vice President, Clerk, Treasurer, and Acting Clerk will follow. So with that, page eight in the board book shows those who have currently been nominated. Right now, we have Mr. Umbyhan nominated for president. Mr. Umbyhan, do you accept that nomination for president?
I do. Excuse me, Mr. Board.
Yes.
We need to be... Unless I missed it, I believe we missed public notice on the agenda.
I believe that I stated that public notice has been given, and we are working off the revised agenda.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So with that, we have one nomination for president. That's Mr. Umbyhan. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Presidents? Any further nominations for president? With that, nominations are closed. And since there are no other nominations, only one person is nominated. That person will receive the office without a vote. Therefore, Mr. Umbyhan has been elected our president for the next term, and I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Umbyhan.
Thank you, Mr. Board. All right, the next officer position is Vice President. There are two nominations. Mr. Bailing and Mr. Huntimer. Mr. Bailing, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Mr. Huntimer, do you?
I do.
Are there any more nominations for Vice President? Any more nominations for Vice President? All right, seeing none, since there's two nominations, we'll have to do a secret ballot. So write the name down of that person you wish to be Vice President, and it's between Mr. Bailing and Mr. Huntimer.
I have, for votes, I have five for Scott Bailing and two for Neil.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Bailing. All right, the next officer position is Clerk. There currently is one nomination, Mrs. Wertz. Mrs. Wertz, do you accept that nomination?
I do.
Are there any more nominations for Clerk? Are there any more nominations for Clerk? All right, I'll make a motion. We close nominations for Clerk. Congratulations, Mrs. Wertz. All right, the next officer position is Treasurer. There are three, well, two nominations now. Mr. Doudna.
Actually, one.
And Mrs. Wertz. Yeah, there's only one. So, Mr. Doudna. Do you accept that nomination?
I think Melissa said you were going to do two positions.
No, I think I was going to say I put my name on the back.
Yeah. All right, so Mr. Bailing is out. Mrs. Wertz is out. Please, Mr. Doudna. Mr. Doudna, do you accept the nomination for Treasurer?
Yes.
Are there any more nominations for Treasurer? Any more nominations for Treasurer? All right, I'll make a motion. We close nominations for Treasurer. Congratulations, Mr. Doudna. All right, Acting Clerk. Mr. Doudna has only one. I assume you're good with Treasurer.
Yep.
Are there any nominations for Acting Clerk? Are there any more nominations for Clerk? Do you accept that nomination?
I will.
Any more nominations for Clerk, Acting Clerk? All right, I'll make a motion. We close nominations for Acting Clerk. Congratulations, Mr. Huntimer. On to the WASB Delegate and Alternates.
Okay, so WASB Delegate and Alternate. This is somebody who plans on attending the State Convention in Milwaukee the third week in January. So if that is something that you feel like you could attend, our delegate is the one that represents the Richland School District at the Wisconsin Association of School Board Delegate Assembly and votes on how the WASB should conduct its business. So we'd be looking for a delegate, and then we would need an alternate just in case the delegate can't fulfill those duties. I know Mrs. Wertz has done it that one time. So if you have any specific questions about what that looks like, I think you'd probably ask. You've been the only one allowed in the secret room.
Right. So I actually have a question with that. Is this the one that Lucy ended up going to?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they do the resolutions and stuff.
Yes, okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Board on that? All right, currently, there's no checks for WASB Delegate. Is there any nominations out there? You can nominate yourself or somebody else. Do you accept that nomination?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any more nominations for the WASB Delegate? All right, I'll make a motion. We close nominations for WASB Delegate. Congratulations, Mrs. Wertz. WASB Alternative. Mrs. Wertz, you were on there. So I'm assuming you're good with being the delegate. Are there any nominations for WASB Alternate? And again, you can nominate yourself or somebody else.
I nominate Scott Bailing.
Scott, do you accept that nomination?
Yes, I will.
I'm going to nominate Sheila Troxel.
Sheila, do you accept that?
I would accept it.
Are there any more nominations for the WASB Alternate?
For the sake of time, would I be able to preside by?
Absolutely can. But remember, we can still go to the convention.
Absolutely.
Should.
And we should. All right, are there any more nominations? Currently, Mrs. Troxel's the only one for the WASB Alternate. Any more nominations? All right, I'll make a motion. We close nominations for the WASB Alternative. Congratulations, Ms. Troxel. All right, on to the Foundation. Currently, there is one person nominated for that. Mr. Board, did you want to give any background on that?
Yeah, our Richland School District Foundation is a partner with our Richland School District. They house a lot of our scholarships, but they also do so much more for our district. And it's not just housing a scholarship. They meet on the second Monday of the month currently. Try to stagger it in between the two board meetings. Usually at 5:30. They typically last an hour, hour and a half, talking about all things that can enhance the experience here at Richland Center High School, whether it's fine arts or in the classrooms. Different groups that have donated money a lot of times go put it into the foundation, even if it's not scholarship. Like the Friends of Science was established several years ago. That's sitting in the foundation account. So it's made up of several community members as well, but their bylaws do state that we have one school board member on it as well. So we'd be looking for somebody who would be interested in that.
Apparently, there's only one person on there, Mr. Bailing. Mr. Bailing, do you accept that nomination?
I do.
Are there any more nominations for the Foundation? And again, you can nominate yourself or somebody else. Any more nominations for Foundation? All right, I'll make a motion. We close nominations for the Foundation. Congratulations, Mr. Bailing. Thank you. All right, the CISA III Convention Representative.
So CISA III is our CISA. There are 12 CISAs around the state. CISA III is ours, located in Fenimore. There's really one major obligation that our CISA representative needs to attend, and that's on Tuesday, August 1st at 6:00 PM down in Fenimore. I believe Mr. Doudna has been down there numerous times. If you have any questions specifically as far as what that looks like, he can certainly answer those as well. Do you have anything to add on what that looks like?
Yeah, unless you're on the board, you don't have to go every month where the board meets or by monthly.
The Board of CISA?
Yes.
Yeah.
So otherwise than that, it's just the one time that you attend. They give it a small dinner and bring in speakers that are relevant to education and basically go through everything that they have to offer the districts. So kind of a little sales pitch on their part, but they're a worthwhile organization.
All right, currently, there's no nominations for the CISA III Convention Representative. Are there any nominations? And again, you can nominate yourself or somebody else. Do you accept that nomination, Mrs. Dickman?
Absolutely. I haven't worked on Tuesdays.
Are there any more nominations for the CISA III Convention Representative? All right, seeing none, I will make a motion. We close CISA III Convention Representative. Congratulations, Mrs. Dickman. Thank you. All right, the CISA III Convention Alternative. There are no nominations for that currently. Are there any nominations for the CISA III Convention Alternative?
I'll nominate Brady Doudna.
Mr. Doudna, do you accept that nomination?
I'll accept.
Are there any more nominations for CISA III Convention Alternative? Or Alternate? Any more nominations? All right, seeing none, I'll make a motion. We close nominations for CISA III Convention Alternate. Congratulations, Mr. Doudna. Thank you. Board Officer Signatures and Contracts.
So this is on page 13. This is the pass. The board had made a motion to allow for the electronic signatures on contracts and agreements as needed. Certainly makes it more convenient from an administrative standpoint to be able to get signatures on things that are time-sensitive. We certainly try to do hand signatures as much as we can, but this allows for electronic signatures as well. So that's what this recommendation would be on, similar to how we've done it the last couple of years.
I would make that motion.
One second.
Any discussion? Real call, Mr. Huntimer.
Aye.
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 Add, just before I forget, for committee assignments, those will be assigned at the May 1st meeting. All right, the Board Officer Signatures on Contracts. Ooh, cleared it out. Selection of Official Newspaper.
So each year, the board does have to establish an official newspaper. Historically, the Richland School District is used the Richland Observer, and we would be recommending that we approve the Richland Observer as the official newspaper again for 2324 where any official business is published.
So move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So a motion made by Mr. Bailing, seconded by Mr. Doudna. Any discussion? Mr. Bailing?
Aye.
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 Aye. Selection of Alternative Investment Location.
And we do appreciate the work that the Richland Observer and all of our media outlets do provide the districts. We store, our primary financial institution is Community First Bank. We have a great working relationship with them, but occasionally, we do transfer money to the local government investment pool known as LGIP as an alternative investment site for money when we have surplus during property tax collection, things like that. We were able to place that in there and earn a little bit better interest rate. And so we'd be looking at approving LGIP or local government investment pool for 2324 as an alternative investment location.
Is there a motion to approve Kirk String, the String Law LLC as a legal firm for most of the legal matters in 2023?
We'll go back to the motion for the alternative investment.
Oh, shoot. Sorry, got ahead of myself. Is there a motion to approve the local government investment pool for alternative investment location for 202324? So move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Doudna?
Aye.
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 All right, selection of legal firms.
So Kirk String has been the district's general counsel, representing us for legal matters, at least the primary person that we use for legal matters for 20-plus years. He's been with various different law firms. He, I don't know, three or four years ago, has now has his own String Law Office LLC, and he has served the district very well in a variety of different legal matters. And we would recommend approving Kirk String with String Law LLC as a legal firm for most of our legal matters in 2324 and empower the district administrator to use other firms as needed for special purposes.
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Ms. Troxel?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Board Memberships and Publications.
It's on page 19. So currently, the Richland School District and the board participates in two associations or alliances, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, WASB, and then the Wisconsin Rural Schools Alliance, which is WI RSA. And we would be looking to extend that membership for the board. This is the board's resources as much as anything. And we would encourage, you know, all board members if these memberships are approved to hop on those websites, get usernames and passwords through Mrs. Steele and use the resources that they have. There's a lot of great information out there for board members. So those would be the two associations that we would be looking to join for next year.
Is there a motion to approve membership in the Wisconsin Association of School Boards and the Wisconsin Rural Schools Alliance for 202324?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Wertz?
Aye.
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 All right, the Board Meeting Schedule, 202324.
So traditionally, the school board has met on the first and third Mondays of the month. There are a couple of conflicts that happen annually throughout the year with that schedule. Fourth of July, Labor Day, and January 1st tends to be months that we do not have the first meeting of the month due to those holidays. In addition, it was brought up by at least one board member, if not two, that we often have conflicts with band and choir concerts on the first and third Monday. And so an alternative schedule was also proposed. And so what you have are two schedules. Page 21 lists the, all of the regularly scheduled board meetings that would be scheduled if we stayed on the first and third Monday of the month. And then page 23 shows a proposed schedule of what that would look like if we went to the second and fourth Mondays of the month. We do typically have a meeting at the end of August to try to wrap up any hiring that we have right before the school year. The second and fourth Monday option does allow organically for that to happen because we would have that meeting scheduled at the end of the month and then avoid those, and then avoid those three holidays that we have. That's not to say that there won't be additional conflicts depending on where Christmas falls, those kinds of things. But the idea would be that maybe we would have less conflicts if we looked at that. So both options are presented, and the board can choose which one they want or some combination of the two. And then the board should also, right now, we've got it published at seven o'clock start times, but starting times for regular scheduled board meetings could be discussed at this point as well. Maybe one at a time.
We have the flexibility throughout the year. We would need to make adjustments to have that on the agenda, make those as needed, correct?
Absolutely. I should also point out, so our annual meeting, if the board does nothing, the annual meeting is set for the July date, third Monday, fourth Monday in July. Last July, at the annual meeting, the powers of the annual meeting gave the board the authority to set the annual meeting date. And one of the things that I had suggested from a financial side is that if we did this in October, when we know more of the financials, the budget information, the budget hearing that we have that are public and weigh in on, we would have more accurate information as opposed to giving them some pseudo-numbers in July and then having so much change by the time our budget actually gets finalized. And so a lot of districts around the state do have their annual meetings closer to the time that the tax levy is set. And so if you look on here, we do have it set for October 23rd at 6:30 with a special meeting to certify the tax levy on the 30th. And that date is set that way in both proposals. So if the board is not looking to do the annual meeting at that time or wants to do a different time, again, we don't have, we can always change that, but the annual meeting did give the board the power to set the date for the annual meeting.
Well, I would make a motion for the meeting schedule to be option two, the second and the fourth Monday of each month.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
And just for the record, this would start in July, and we would finish out our regularly scheduled meetings for May and June.
Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to talk about the time now? It's 7:00 PM. Work for folks or is it 6:30, 6:00? Is there an alternate time that we want to entertain? Or is it 7:00, hard to stone?
Seven's about for me.
So I'll just make a motion. We keep the meeting time at 7:00. The second and fourth Mondays is posted. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Does that include the annual meeting? Or would we keep the annual meeting at 6:30? Traditionally, it's a meeting of the public, not a meeting of the board. So just want to make sure that, clarifying.
It's always been 6:30.
Yep.
Aye?
Aye.
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 All right. Board Docs Training.
All right, so we have Don from Board Docs that will be joining us tonight. So in an effort to become more transparent with our public and our staff and just to make it easily accessible for the board, you know, these board books that are placed, one in each building, and a handful of people get paper copies of it. Of course, anybody can get them if they request it. But one of the things that we've heard over the last year was that these need to be more available for people a little bit more easily. And so Board Docs is a company. They house our policies as well. It's the same platform that our policies will now be on through Neola. And they do meeting agendas as well so that we would have all of our stuff housed in one electronic location. For those board members that may want a paper copy, we can certainly accommodate that through this transitional period. But it would allow you to have full access to all of the board materials, not just the agenda, but all the supplemental materials online as well, in color, in full form. There would be attachments or links or whatever. And the public can have access to that as well. So a lot of the things that, you know, are sometimes presented in a board book, the public doesn't necessarily get to see unless it's showed up on the screen. This would allow them to have full access. So like I said, a lot of school districts are using it. We're going to be moving to it. And with that, we're going to have, what, Don? About a four-hour training here tonight?
Well, only if you have cookies and so forth. But no, no.
Well, only if you have cookies and so forth, but no, no. Thank you so much for that. Yes, Board Docs is a, is a very popular system, a lot of people in Wisconsin use it. So I'm here tonight just to give you a quick overview of everything you really need to know to use it. I live in St. Louis, and actually, I've used Board Docs myself. I was working for a school district here, and I used it with my board, and I loved it so much, I left my school district, and now I, I conduct training of school districts all over the United States. So Board Docs is an online system, which means specifically it has an internet address. So you're going to enter it through a link that's actually going to be on your district website. So I'm going to share my screen and kind of walk you through how you would log in into Board Docs, all right? So feel free to stop me at any time, ask me any questions, I'm happy to do that. So let me share my screen here. All right, hang on just a minute. All right. So the screen I'm sharing, of course, is your district's, your district's website. Right now, as your, as you just heard, your district policies are in Board Docs. And you can see right here, this is how you can get into Board Docs to look specifically at your policies, all right? When you enter into the policy area, this is the entire Board Doc site, right here. So you can enter that way. You probably, at some point, there will be a link into Board Docs. My guess, where people go for the agenda now, which would be on your district tab, school board, and then down in this area, there can be another link that goes to the same place, so you can have a couple of links on your site to get there. Board Docs is not an app, so you'll never go to an app store and get an app. You must get on a browser like Google or Firefox or something like that. It's made to be an internet site and not an app. All right. So again, if you click this, it'll take you into your Board Doc site. Here, as you can see, got your logo here, as I scroll down a little bit, information about your meetings, and then what you'll notice is there's some larger tabs in the top right-hand corner. Now, the public has access to this, the public can see your agendas, and you do a great job, you're very transparent, you give the public a ton of information. However, occasionally, there might be some material that maybe the public cannot have, such as backup material for a personnel issue or a student matter, and because as a board, you can see that information, it's always a good idea for board members to log in, because logging into Board Docs gives you the opportunity to see that confidential information should you need to have that view. All right, so if you're coming into Board Docs and you're on the public side, which I am, there's an easy way to log in with your username and your password. So I'm going to blow my browser up a little bit larger so you can see this. Right above the word policies here, you'll notice that in this slim black header, there's a little picture of an outline of a head. We call that the avatar icon. And if you click the arrow next to that, you'll see it says login. And clicking that will allow you to log in with your credentials, so you could see that information for closed or executive session, backup material, that type of thing. So if you click that, it brings up where you can enter that username and that password. So it's always a good idea to make sure that the board is logged in, just in case there is some material that you need to have in order to have that meeting, all right? So that's the process of logging in. So I'll just click sign in. And I'll zoom back out again, because we don't need to have it that large. There we go. So as I'm logged in, I'll go through the tabs. Notice that you have a tab that says meetings, one that says policy, and one that says library. If you click on the tab that says meetings, of course, that takes you to the home of all the meetings that you're going to have in Board Docs. And you'll notice there's one here, April twenty-fourth, that you can click on. Clicking on that meeting opens up a window where you can see more about the meeting, what time, where is it located, and then that notice that you're used to seeing at the top of all of your agendas, that's here as well. So think of this area, if you can remember what it was like to have a paper agenda back in the day, it would be the heading part that's on the top of your agenda, that's what's in this area. And then you'll have a few buttons that you have, view the agenda, print the agenda. I have a couple of other buttons showing because of my status as a trainer here. So we'll just click view the agenda, and you'll notice that the agenda, the order of business is over here on the left-hand side. So there's a section called the opening items, and of course, you can recognize this is call to order, pledge of allegiance, and so forth. And then the board had the reorganization topics, and then your future board meeting discussion for next year, and now you're here at Board Docs Training. So this is an outline of your agenda on the left. What you see on the right-hand side is the backup material, the details, the proposed motions, about one agenda item from the left at a time. So if I want to look at call to order, you click call to order, and this is the item that appears on the right. Of course, this is just call to order, there's really no content with that. Click on the next one, which would be pledge of allegiance, pledge of allegiance then loads on the left. So you're clicking on the left, reading on the right, clicking on the left, and reading on the right. You'll notice on some of these items, you'll see an icon that looks like a piece of paper. That means that when you click on that item, and I'll just click on election of officers, then that means that you have at least one attachment to open up. This would be that supplemental material. Typically, it's going to be added as a PDF document, which makes it very easy to open. So if I click on this document, it just opens up a new tab on the internet where I can now see that, and I can zoom in if I'd like to look at, look at that a little bit larger. So the supplemental materials are just an attachment, kind of like how you would open an attachment on an email, right? Just click it, and it opens up. Now that I have this opened up, I can close it very easily just by going up to the internet tab and clicking the X, and I'm back. So again, clicking on the left, reading on the right. Now, over time, you're going to have a lot of agendas in here. I have this agenda that's opened up now that I'm done with it. How would I go back and see another meeting? All you do is click on the tab at the top that says meetings, and it takes you back to the home of all of your meetings. So if I click on meetings, here we are. One of the things we have here is a sample of the agenda layout for a regular board meeting, and you can see it says here, May first. This meeting is not fully developed yet, but we wanted it to be visible to you tonight for your training so you could see what a full agenda would look like. So if I click on May first here, again, after I click on it, I'm going to see all of that meeting notice information that you're accustomed to seeing, and then click view this agenda. And now you'll notice that this agenda, of course, has much more material on it, because this is a regular meeting, and the other one was a reorg meeting, right? So we have all of our opening items, we have the opportunity for the public to speak to the, to the board, all your reports, your minutes, financial items, consent agenda, and so forth. So all of your agenda would look like that, okay? And again, you just click on an area, open up, read on the right, click on an area, read on the right. Done with this meeting, you just click meetings tab up at the top, and you're back to all the meetings. One of the things when I was conducting training with Laura is the ability to put past information in Board Docs, and that's why you see the year two thousand twenty-two here, because what she has started to do, and it's a labor of love, is to come in and put in past meetings before you even started Board Docs. So you can see that she's put some attachments of some board books back, and she's just going backwards and moving forward and putting that information in. So this would become a repository of information for you even before you started using Board Docs. So she's working on that, getting that in there. Again, clicking on the meetings tab, which I see up in the right, and I'm back again. So she's got under two thousand twenty-two archived books, and she may even go back even further, and then you would have a two thousand twenty-one area and a two thousand twenty. I'm, I'm not promising anything on behalf of Laura, but she can go backwards in here. She's going to yell at me tomorrow, she's going to call me, she's going to say, Don, why'd you say that? So it's all going to be nicely organized in here, everybody can search on it, and that's one of the things that is the coolest thing ever. You've got all of these meetings over time, you've got all of these attachments, all of these documents, how can you find stuff? And that's one of the things I'm going to cover tonight, is the searchability of all of this data. Not only can you search on it, but so can the public, and so that just makes you even more transparent in your work. All right, so meetings, right, has a whole tab here dedicated to meetings. So let's just go over what we have left here. This featured tab, what is this? This is the initial page as you come in, where you can see your logo information here. Again, the meetings will be the home of all meetings and even past agendas. The agenda tab, it appears after you click on a meeting, and what it does is it's a shortcut. It's a shortcut to the very last agenda that you were looking at in Board Docs, takes you right back to whatever agenda you were looking at. In my case, it was looking back at those archived board books. And of course, policies, this is where you're working with Neola and having policies in here and working with your policies through Neola, so they are partnered with you, where you can just open up these different sections and see a specific policy if you'd like. Public has access to this as well. And then the last area, it's, it's under construction, it's an area where the board can receive all kind of information. So as you know, as a board, you, you're receiving a ton of information from the school district. Agendas is just one of many, many things that over the course of the year you would get from them. And as this information is given to you, you know, maybe you need a copy of a report, or you need to know that high school graduation is in three weeks, and you need to meet in the band room, and all of those things, that you need to know where to be and extra material that you look at, how are you getting that now? Some of it might be a hard copy, some of it might be emailed to you, or even shared on a Google Drive. That can become very confusing for board members to know, well, how do I go back and get stuff that someone sent to me? This area of the library is meant to be a repository of all of these peripheral things that the board has given, and you come into one place to get it. So you come here into the library, and you can see your meeting calendar, and we link that to your district website. Other things in here could be a calendar for you of knowing where you need to be for different activities and things like that. That would be in the dropdown on the library where there's an event area. Also, in the future, you can have your strategic plan, your strategic goals within Board Docs, and even have them aligned with specific agenda items that help you achieve that piece of your goal. So there's lots of things in the library that's to be coming. I know that most districts really just want to kind of get the meetings area down and the policy area down, and then as you grow in Board Docs, you can start to explore some of these other areas. One of the last things I want to show you is what I was mentioning earlier and how easy this is to search. You can do this, the public can do this. So if I want to find some past information, what do I do? Where do I go? As you look in the top of these larger tabs, you'll notice that there's a slim header, the black header up here, and there's a couple of icons, and one of them is a circle with a line, that's the universal search icon. And clicking that will take you into the search area within Board Docs. So I'm just going to show you how that works. I'm going to give it a click, and here I am. I can pinpoint what pieces of Board Docs I want my search to stay within. Do I want to be in meetings and policies and the library and attachments? What do I want to search within? I don't want to search in the policies, I don't want to search in the library, I just really want to search my meetings. So I'm going to put in report card, kind of your school report card. I was looking back at some of your past board books, and I noticed that the word report card, school report card, was within some of these board books. So if I just give this one a click, this is a hundred and seventy-four page document. This is a hundred and seventy-four pages, and it's searchable, which means if you know one word that's in this hundred and seventy-four page, you're going to find this document, it's going to find this for you. And then, as you look at this, you can say, yes, that's exactly what I want to go see. Notice you have a tool that says navigate there. That will take you to the agenda that this document was attached to. So if you say navigate there, now it takes me to that, and this is that same board book where I can open it up much larger, and I can zoom in and view it and so forth. So I know that this is the one that it found, because right here it says state school report card. Not only can you do this, but your public can do this too, the same way where it says navigate me there. All right, now, I'm going to go right back into search one more time. As a board member, you have a second search, and you must be logged in in order to use it and see it, and we call it the meta-search. Board Docs has the ability to have a ton of public information that's in one area on our servers, because we serve thirty-five-hundred school districts, and all of the public information that they put on their agendas, you can search. You can search the other school district Board Docs topics. So we call it the meta-search. So once you're in the search area, you'll notice at the very end of this line of topics, it says meta. And if you click that, you are in a totally different search, you're not searching Richland's data, but you're searching all the thirty-five-hundred school districts that use Board Docs. You want to know what they're doing about a topic. I'll just put in bullying, because I can spell it, okay? So I type in bullying, and I'm wondering, what are others doing about bullying? Notice what it brings me, board members, it brings me policies, this is a policy from Colorado, a policy from Indiana, an agenda item from Virginia, all of these school districts use Board Docs. So if I wanted to see, oh, this is a bullying prevention proclamation, it brings up that agenda item snapshot of what the public got. So it's a great way to come in here, do research, find out what others are doing about topics that interest you. And not only that, we hope that you can use this as a way to network, because let's say that that bullying proclamation statement was the best thing ever, you know that you can call Frederickburg City School District in Virginia and say, hey, I use Board Docs, I saw this was on the agenda, I would love to speak to someone in charge of that program. And so now you're off running and, and learning from other boards and other school districts on what they do with topics that interest you. Now, I like Virginia, but Wisconsin's better, right? So I can come up to bullying and put in the initials for Wisconsin, and now my results are going to be more Wisconsin-forward. So you'll notice now here Seymour Community Schools, Whitefish Bay, and so forth. So putting in different things in the search area will allow you to narrow down your search, kind of like how you would do it if you were in a Google search, right? So meta-search, you've got to be logged in. The public does not have meta, because as you think about what meta is useful for, it's useful for administrators and board members, it's a way for you to network with those, anyone that has a password is, is able to use the meta. If you're finished with your search, and now you're done and you want to know how to get back into Board Docs, you simply click this little X that you see here on the left, and that takes you back to where you were in Board Docs. One of the last things that I want to show you is the area where you can do a little bit of changing. All of you have a username and a password, we would encourage board members to change your password, and you do that right here in the Board Doc system. You do that, again, on that black slim header where that search icon was, just to the right of it, you'll notice there's what we call an avatar icon, it looks like a little outline of a person's head, it's kind of where you logged in. Now that you're logged in, it would show your name, and notice how it says change your password, because the passwords that were created for you were, you know, just something that I would call more of a generic password, so you can make your password more useful for you, knowing, you know, your passwords. So if I click change password, this is where you would change it. You simply put in the password that you were first given, which is in the old password box, and then create a new one. Now, just like anything else, yes, your password has rules to it, and those password rules you'll see on the right-hand side, ten characters, uppercase, lowercase, those kind of things. So as long as your new password has all of those pieces, then you're able to change your password. Once you have a good password in here, this will brighten, and you'll Once you have a good password in here, this will brighten, and you'll be able to click Change My Password. So you can do that at any time, you don't necessarily have to do that this evening, but it's a good idea to change your password to something only you know. If you forget your password after you change it, just reach out to Laura, she has a password reset where she could reset it to something different and tell you your new password. So just reach out to her should you have a problem, because she has some access to the user area on the back end. All right, click Cancel here. I'm going to go ahead and pause here for a moment. Are there any questions or comments that I can help you with?
This is Melissa, I have a question. So if we log in right off the bat, is there, I mean, most topics will be pretty obvious to Board members with the public, you know, if it is a personnel issue or something like that, but is there a way to know what those private memos are?
Yes, great, right. Because when you're logged in, Melissa, and you're looking at an Agenda, and I'll just use this particular one from today, notice that when you're clicked on one of these, you're going to see some different content areas over here on the right, with these being the confidential ones. There's a public area, which my experience with you, with your district, is you give a lot to the public, so I would expect almost everything is going to be in the public view. But when you have something that needs to be in a confidential area, you're going to have a content area on the right, two of them actually, administrative content and executive content. And as a Board member, you have that executive privilege to see the executive content area.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. If you don't see it, please let Laura know, but I think we have everybody set up correctly as far as the Board, and you should see all of those other content areas. So again, they probably won't be used very often, except when there's a piece that typically it's by law, things can't be shared, that kind of thing, and it normally boils down to Personnel and Student Matters, those kind of things. Any other questions I can help you with, or comments you might have? I'm so excited for you guys to take this step to Board Docs. It's, you know, it makes everybody much more efficient, it makes your messaging to your public just loud and clear of your Agenda. I'm so excited that you guys have decided to start using our service.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you, Don.
I have a question.
You bet.
Robin has a question.
Yep.
Okay, so I just saw this, how about that little message thing that says Take Notes? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, yes, Take the Notes, yes. In order for me to show you that, I'm going to use my demo database, because the Note feature is specific to the Board, and I'm not logged in as a Board member, so I can't show it to you using your database, but let me open up my demo database. I always have this open. So this is my Board Doc site, and I'm logged in as a Board member. My name is Stacy right now. As you review the Agenda when it's given to you several days before the meeting, sometimes the Board wants to remember to ask a question during the meeting. So we have a Note feature that basically makes you paperless, so you don't have to, you know, print something out and write something, scribble something down, right? So if you click on an Agenda, and once you have that Agenda open, again, this is my Agenda, and I'm going to view it, first you decide what Agenda item do I want to put my note on, right? So you click on, I'll just click on Leave of Absence, right? Up in the top right-hand corner, you'll see an icon that looks like a conversation bubble. Think of this, Board members, as, let me get my visual aid, it's like a post-it note, okay? So when you click it, I can say, remember to ask about the leave length. Maybe I don't know how long this person's going to be gone, okay? Now, I've typed in my message or my note, and notice I have a couple of tools at the bottom of it. The check allows me to save it, the X, it just kind of wipes it out, no saving, and then later if I want to delete it, which most people delete their notes later, you can throw it away with the trash can. So if I say I'm going to save it, now I can go ahead and close it. Notice that my Note icon now is yellow, which tells me, as I'm going through the Agenda later after I make my notes, because normally you make your notes at home, and then when you come to the Board meeting, your notes are on your Board Agenda. So I can go through the Agenda, so now I'm at the meeting, I'm clicking on an item before it, notice I don't have any yellow there, and I click on my Leave of Absence, that's a visual indication to me that I put a note on there. So during the meeting, I can just give it a click, and I can see my question, yes, I have a question. What is the length of the Leave of Absence, see? So it's a nice tool for the Board to be able to write down, jot down a little note to yourself to remember and prompt you to ask a question. The Notes have some limitations, I cannot open a document and put a note on it, the note just lives, I'm just holding down the black header here, and I'm just moving it with my mouse, so the note really just lives in this right-hand panel over here. And I can delete my note, I can print my note out if I needed to print a note, I could do that, and if I click Close, then it's just gone, okay? So yes, you can put a note, just like I said, it's just something to jog your memory, and that way you have a paperless experience if you need that.
So can I follow up with that? So how long does that, if you don't ever delete it, does it just live in your own Board Docs forever as a note on those documents?
Yeah, yeah, it would. You're the only one that has access to the note, you're the only one that can delete it, and it's on a separate server than from the Agenda, so it's just a repository of all your little notes. So over time, let's say you put 40 notes on, and you don't even know where all 40 notes are, you could print out your note and all notes that you have printed, not just this one. So if I click Print, it's going to bring up a window as soon as that loads here, it's going to bring up a window that will show any note and tell me what meeting it was on, what Agenda item it was on, and so forth. So it'll bring up a print window for you, so you can go back later and delete your notes if you want to, but they're there as long as you might need them. And you're the only one that sees the note, there's not another Board member that sees that note, that's your just personal little scribble area. Here we go. So this is, this gives me the list of every note I ever made, it tells me what meeting it's on, what Agenda item it's on, and it also gives me what my note was. Remember to ask about the leave length. So I could print these out, and I would be able to see where all my notes are. If I wanted to delete my note, the process to delete a note is one at a time, you just click on your note and open it, then click where your note message is, and that will bring up the trash can where you then can delete your note. And now I have no note there anymore.
Thank you.
So, yep, you can use it if you'd like it, it's a great little feature just to jot down your thoughts. Any other questions?
I assume there's no file size restrictions as far as if you add hundreds of notes, then it gets too big, I assume that that's a problem?
No, yeah, you're never going to hit a file size requirement or a max when it comes to the note, because it's just text. There is a file size max when it comes to these attachments, these documents here, but it's like a half an hour video size, 300 megabytes, and most documents are never going to get that big, so it very, very rarely happens that you have a document that's going to hit that max. But there's no storage limit. We've had people that have honestly used Board Docs for 20 years, and, you know, there's no storage limit as far as your data of your meetings and so forth in here.
Thank you.
It's all up in the cloud. You know, one more thing about the note, most of us have a couple, most of us have a couple of different devices that we use, like for instance, I have a PC in front of me, but I have a Mac in my living room. Can I put a note using my Mac and then bring my PC, will my note be on it? Yes, because they're not on the device, they're on the cloud, they're in the cloud. So you could theoretically make a note with one computer and read your note on another one. So it's all tied to, you know, your login. So wherever you're logged in, your notes will be on any device. It's like magic. Any other questions I can help you with?
Is there a mobile-friendly version, so if you're wanting, you know, I do a lot of work on my phone, is there an option for that, or is it kind of clunky?
You know, it looks the same on a phone than it does on your computer, so there's not a mobile version to get used to, and remember what I shared with you at the beginning, Board Docs is not an app, so how would you get to it on your phone? You would get to it on your browser on your phone. So you could bring up your district website, click the Board Docs link, and it'll look just like it does on your screen today, it'll look like that on your phone, so you'll be able to pinch and pull and zoom in. It's probably not the device of choice for a long view, but if you just need to go in there and check something real quick. We keep it looking the same so it doesn't cause any confusion. You know, some sites, and I'm sure you're all aware of this, you could be on, I don't know, LL Bean, okay? I could be looking at LL Bean on my computer, and then get on my phone, looks totally different on my phone, then I got to think, okay, now where am I going to find that? In Board Docs, it renders the same, you're not going to get a mobile version that could confuse people. And so we keep the versioning the same regardless of the device, it's just a little bit smaller.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, yep. Any other questions?
Seeing none, thank you, Don.
You bet. All right, if you ever have any questions, or you have need for more training, new Board members may come in over time, you can always reach out to Board Docs, there's never a fee for training, just let us know how we can help.
All right, thank you.
All right, you bet. Thanks.
So a couple of things just to kind of wrap up. First of all, if anybody's looking for past meeting that they have, as Don mentioned, we have 2022s archived in there, and we'll just continue to, as we get free time, work backwards and put those in there so that they're searchable. There's only going to be, for each of those, there's only going to be one meeting, and it's going to be labeled December 31st of that year. And when you click on that meeting, the Agenda items will be all of the different meetings for the year. So if you saw in there, there was April and May and June, and then really we've just uploaded the PDF version of the document for past archives, so, but it is all searchable, and so that's the process that we'll be going through, and we'll go back as far as we can, but it'll just take us a little bit of time to get that. But we did want to make sure that we had last year's in there, because so many things happen on an annual basis as we get through things, and you want to say, well, what did we do last year, how did that work last year? You'll at least have one year's worth of information. The second thing I want to point out is you'll notice the Agenda items will be slightly different in structure, okay? But we believe that this will be much easier for Board members and the public to know exactly what's going to happen on any given meeting night, okay? So you will specifically see things that are listed for Consent Agenda, all right? So it will be no more voting ahead of time, okay? The idea is, is that between the Board President and myself, we will be able to select the items for Consent Agenda, give Board members a good opportunity to be able to get any questions that they may have for those Consent Agenda items, get them answered ahead of time. You still have the ability at the Board meeting to pull anything from Consent Agenda, but at least everybody will know, these are the things that we would typically have on Consent, let me get my questions answered ahead of time, have them answered, and if everything's satisfactory, leave them on Consent, but again, if you need to, you can certainly pull them from Consent. And then the last thing with regards to structure, as you see the different segments of the Agenda, you'll be able to specifically see, these are Reports, okay? These are financial information, and then more importantly, these are for information only, and finally, these are action items, okay? And so everybody that's in the public and all of our Board members will know, these are the things that we're just getting information on, we're not acting on them. These are the things that we are expected to act on tonight and take action on. So we will be listed very specifically as opposed to new business, old business, and having all of this stuff intertwined together, be very specific, Reports, Financial Information, Information and Discussion Only, actionable items before we move into closed. So it should make it very clear for Board members, and more importantly, or equally as importantly, for our public to know, what is the Board actually taking action on on any given night? If you have any questions, I can answer them, or I can answer them, and it is a new tool. Again, we'll try to provide paper documents for those that want them, need them, for as long as you want them or need them as Board members, we want to make it convenient for you, but we do want to have things more accessible for our public as well.
Make a motion, adjourn, is there a second?
One second.
Discussion, Mr. Huntimer.
Hi.
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 Hi. Thank you, everybody.